I mean, I have drink. I'm a liquid. It's simple. You get your. And I am not.
I watch the idea as well. Start that again. Here's another.
Yeah.
Hold on. I think you see.
Order the common council meeting on Monday, March 3rd.
Kevin Schmidt. John Orleve. Scott Mervin. Nick Swedberg. Wayne Schmidt. Casey Boer. Lee Dashlet. Amy Johnson.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Confirm the meeting plans with open means, that please.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. I have a request to move an agenda item, the resolution 1220-2025 for new business up to or public comment. So I will promote.
Also move second.
Move by me, is that where? Second by Scott, sorry.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pools? That carries. Did everyone look at the meeting minutes?
Mayor, could I get a motion to now approve amended agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So.
Second. Move by me, is that where?
Yeah, correct.
Second by Scott, sorry.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pools? That carries. Now, if you had a chance to look at the February 3rd and the February 17th meeting minutes.
So moved.
Oh, silence. Moved to approve.
I'll second.
And second by Amy.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pools? Carries. And then we'll move to that resolution number 1220-2025, Resolution Creating Tax Increment District Number Five.
I'll make a motion. Resolution 1220-2025.
Motion by Scott.
Okay.
Second by John. Is there any discussion? Just. Do you want to add anything, do you?
Katrina, did you want to maybe just give a slight recap of the TID project before they just go ahead?
Sure, yeah, I can do that. Um, can everybody hear me? Okay. Okay, good. Um, so this is a resolution to create a TID number five in Algoma. Um, this is a 20-year mixed-use TID. Um, it is in the west-central area of the city. A mixed-use TID just means that there is a mix of residential, commercial, and industrial uses planned for the TID area. Um, and it, one requirement is that the area of newly-planted residential has to be below 35% of the total TID area. Um, so there's a parcel of farmland that a developer is interested in turning into, um, I believe 107 housing units, um, a mix of single-family units and condos. Um, and then there's also a manufacturer in the southeastern part of the TID that is potentially, um, considering expanding and that could, um, add value to the TID and add new jobs. Um, this meets all the requirements for being a mixed-use TID. Uh, it performs well financially, um, and the city is well within the 12% TIF limit requirement. Um, yeah, I think that's all I have. If anyone has any, any questions, this would be, um, kind of the final, this would be the formal, um, adoption date that the TID, um, is approved, but it will be effective. So the TID will essentially be created as of January 1st of this year. And then there is a final, uh, joint review board meeting this Wednesday. That would be the, kind of the, um, last meeting on the TID creation, and then everything will be submitted to the Department of Revenue.
Thank you. Any questions? I have a motion by Scott and a second by John.
Yep, give me just one second here. Okay, so we just have resolution 1220-2025, a resolution creating tax increment district number five. Do you need any more? Okay, and that motion was made by Mervin and second by Orleve. Dashlet.
Yes.
Orleve.
Yes.
Boer.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Mervin.
Yes.
Kevin Schmidt.
Yes.
Katrina, thank you very much. We're not kicking you off, but if you want to go off, you're more than welcome to.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Pass. Um, public comment, is there anybody here tonight for public comment? See, Mike, you want to come up to the stand, state your name and address, please? Your new address, if you remember it.
Not that far.
Okay.
Mike Frillik, 1610 Navarino Street. Proud to be a resident of the area in Algoma. As you know, I've come to the council a few times commenting on legion activities. I just wanted to give you a little update. You know that we had the cannon picked up. Uh, it's being sandblasted and painted right now. We sent the wheels off to Marion for repair. We have new wheels made for the cannon. We picked them up, they're back here in Algoma. So just giving you a little update that, uh, we're moving forward with that. Uh, come springtime, uh, we'd like to see about setting the cannon back in the park. Um, I'd like to visit with the, uh, park people and, uh, see what we can work out. Also, just a, a bit of a forethought. Uh, we're aware that there's no veterans memorial in Algoma. Virtually all the cities in the area have their own veterans memorial. And many of our people are quite interested in that, and we are attempting to put together some type of plan. This is just a little advance notice, just saying that the council and the citizens know that that's something that we're interested in working on, and, uh, we'll be talking more about that when we get closer to, uh, some type of plan coming down the road. Uh, thank you for your time. Appreciate being here, and thanks to all for the work that you're doing on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Matt. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we will move on. Uh, consideration of bills and claims, if everybody had a chance to look at the general bills and credit card payments. Are there any questions from the bills?
Um, Matt, who is that reading in Lewis?
That is, uh, Tony Stafford, our attorney.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thanks.
I'll make a motion to approve those.
No, second.
Motion by Major, second by Lee.
Mervin.
Yes.
Kevin Schmidt.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Boer.
Yes.
Orleve.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Conference attendance, Matt?
That's what we go to Wisconsin Association.
That was approved by.
Correct.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
By Scott and second by Amy. All in favor?
Aye.
Pools? And all the committee reports, everybody go over. Now, second. Kevin, second by Amy, any discussion?
That, the discussion that took place at the park, they went through that Newman Park, is, do you have any plans at all that you're gonna, what you're gonna present or what they're going to present as far as what you want to do there?
You see, you made that, maybe, or whatever.
Yeah, sir, they can have a, they have a very. Um, energetic plan that they want to accomplish. Um, it's kind of the beginning stages, we're, we're actually meeting later this week with, um, the lady from L N R P and Abigail from the school to see what kind of help they can put towards it. So we'll, uh, we'll probably have an update. Uh, we have Mark, uh, attempt, we have a parks meeting, and after that, hopefully we have something a little better to bring forward to the council.
Was there any type of discussion as far as like, uh, if you've been up in Sturgeon Bay at the Y, they got outside, where they got these different stations that you could go and you can leg lift or whatever? Any type of exercise program that would be implemented into this or not?
No, the first thing I did, the main thing they're looking at was like a, um, like a walkway. I mean, I kind of mentioned before, we possibly put in fruit trees in there, which they liked that idea. Then they're looking at me like a gazebo in there. Um, there's some flower beds and some storm stuff they want to look at too, so we just got to kind of see what we can afford is probably the biggest part of it, and then, um, kind of get a better plan.
They also talked about using it as an extended classroom at times, as needed when the high school or the elementary school wanted to come down, so there was no talk about putting those exercise things, and it was more, making it more hands-on and interactive with the native plants.
Cause you're familiar with this exercise.
Oh, yes, 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 I do.
And you're on that commute.
Correct.
Anything else? Um, I have a motion and a second, Rudy. All in favor?
Aye.
Pools? Uh, any licenses, Steve?
No, there's not.
Uh, old business, fire and rescue building.
Fire and rescue building, myself, the fire chief and assistant chief and a couple others met together to kind of go through the last, um, kind of mop up, a little bit of, of small, um, details, I guess. Um, talked about some different color and if that changes the price or doesn't change the price. Robert E. Lee by this Wednesday is supposed to finalize the site plan, and, um, Bayland should be ready to put that out today. So I'm hoping here by probably early part of next week that that would be ready to go out today.
Okay. And, uh, library building, administration?
Library building is in Bayland's hands, and they are working with their estimators to come back and get us a price. Um, once we have that hard number, uh, we'll be able to bring that back here and start to dissect and look at what that number looks like. But Bayland is working through, um, getting us a proposed dollar amount.
Any questions on either one of those buildings? To new business, uh, Algoma Public Library Presentation?
Kathy, do you want to turn on the microphone when you go up there?
I believe I did, Kathy, is it green? There should be a little green light right on the top of it.
I didn't see a green light.
Go ahead. Yeah. Green light.
Yeah.
Hello, and thank you for your time. Thank you, council, for letting me present here tonight. I'll be, um, I wanted to present some highlights from our 2024 annual report, which was just completed and approved by our library board in February. This is something that is required by the Department of Public Instruction each year. So every year we put all these, all these statistics together, and I just wanted to, um, provide some of that for you tonight. It provides a detailed look at our library, our services, usage, and impact over the past year. Um, by the numbers, 2024, in 2024, we had 19,823 visitors, um, walking through our doors, engaging with library services and resources. We had 214 new cardholders. We currently have 1,585 resident city cardholders. Um, that's almost 50% of Algoma's residents that have access to free books, resources, and more. There were 43,530 physical items checked out, and that is 3,806 more than the previous year. Of those, 18,000, just over 18,000 were children's materials, um, supporting early literacy and youth engagement. And then digital checkouts, we had 13,884. E-books, e-audiobooks, magazines, videos checked out, providing content or convenient access to books, um, audiobooks anytime, anywhere. We offered 197 programs, and then we had 2,914 people participate in those programs. We sent 14,000 in 23 items to other libraries in 2024, and in return, we received 15,692, expanding access to materials beyond our collection. And then we had 7,584 reference transactions, helping patrons with their research, technology, and informational needs. Our collection, at the end of 2024, we had almost 30,000 books in print, 32 physical subscriptions, that's newspapers, magazines, 4,338 video materials, and then almost 2,000 other materials. So those are pamphlets in our pamphlet file, library things, hotspots, um, some tablets. Next slide. As I mentioned, we had 197 programs with, um, almost 3,000 attendees. We continue to offer a wide range of programs and activities for all ages, including storytimes, prep programs, STEAM programs, summer reading program, tea parties, book clubs, art club, art clubs, um, scavenger hunts, and much more. We held our annual outdoor movie, that's the bottom left picture there, thanks to the Community Development Committee and a grant from Algoma Utilities in 2024. Um, nearly 300 people attended that. And then our Halloween party is another highlight from 2024, with your community members of all ages. And last year, we had 130 people, um, come to that program, and that was just in a one-hour time period. Next slide. One of the misconceptions we sometimes hear maybe is that the library only focuses on children's programming and after-school programming. Um, while we do offer many programs for children, we also offer programs for teens, adults, and then we have programs for all ages, from educational workshops, technology training, book clubs, craft programs, gaming. We, um, strive to provide something for everyone in our community. Our goal is to be a space where people of all ages can learn, connect, and engage. Next slide. Visits, there, um, maybe also some discussion about children and their usage of the library. And while they are an important part of our community, this graph shows the bigger picture. Children made up 34% of our visits, um, but the majority of the visitors are adults. People of all ages rely on the library, whether for books, technology, entertainment, jobs, job searching, programs, meeting room space, or just a quiet place to work or sit. We collaborated and partnered with many individuals, organizations, and businesses in the community. This is something we do every year. Uh, just a few examples, we partnered with Bird City Algoma through a citizen science grant, bringing bird watching and nature education to our community. We received a Family Dollar literacy grant, supporting our thousand books before kindergarten program, helping young children get an early start on literacy. We have active outreach to local, public, and private schools. We have monthly visits from a Luxembourg school, where students are really excited to engage in our materials and resources. We outreach at Waterfall Health Algoma, um, sharing the library's resources with seniors and other community members. We partnered with a local forest scout last year who provided backpede bonnie kits, and then we also partnered with a local Algoma Venture Academy student who put together a seed library for us. Our friends in the library group provides valuable support as well throughout the year, helping with programming events, fundraising, and so much more. Next slide. We had some space enhancements in 2024. As you know, we underwent a carpeting replacement project, um, requiring a closure for one week. Library staff, with the help of some volunteers, moved every item off the shelves, um, and when the carpeting was replaced, and then, um, the bookshelves were back in place, we moved everything back. That was close to 30,000 items that we, that we moved on, on our own, and this, this helped keep the cost down. The costs associated with this renovation was covered entirely by endowments, and interest accrued from those endowments managed under the library board. There was also some, um, private donations as well. Those city funds were used for that. We added a touch-to-play wall in the teen area, providing interactive education, fun games, and activities in a dedicated space where teens can enjoy, gather, engage. Um, and then this was made available from grants to our library system and support from our library friends. And then we did a children's area redesign. This area was rearranged to create a more defined, welcoming, visually appealing space for, for our visitors. Next slide. Technology and job resources. In 2024, we had 1,157 public computer sessions, so people that logged on to our public computers, and 2,685 Wi-Fi sessions, ensuring internet access for work, learning, connection, and entertainment. We have hotspots available for checkout, providing internet access beyond our library walls. Um, throughout the years, we've received different grants and donations for these as well. And then we've got lunch pet, our lunch pad, learning tablets, they're available for checkout. They support interact, they, um, they provide, um, they're, excuse me, they're preloaded with educational games, they, um, some of them content spans subject for math, science, critical thinking, and creativity, and then these tablets were also purchased with grants. Next slide. Algoma, our library was a second job pod pilot site in the state of Wisconsin. We were lucky enough to partner with the Ronquini Library, the Nicolay Federated Library System, Bay Area Workforce Development Board, and the Department of Workforce Development. There are plans to expand to more libraries statewide this year. They were able to secure a partnership with Microsoft, offering additional digital tools and learning opportunities that our staff had some training on. Then we have a laptop available for job searching, resume building, and online applications, as well as virtual meetings if needed. Our library staff have assisted community members with resumes and job applications, empowering job searchers with essential skills. Next slide. Funding in the library. Um, as you can see here, our primary financial support does come from the city, as we are a city library. Funding also comes from county contributions. Additional funding comes from grants, donations, organized individuals, as well as, um, memorials. We've got an endowment. Our friends at the library, their ongoing support helps fund materials, um, programs, special initiatives, and then coffee spines and other income. They're small but important revenue streams that help operational costs as well. Next slide. Expenses, the majority of our budget supports staff salaries and benefits, ensuring excellent service. Our library collections material includes books, DVDs, digital resources, and other lending materials, programming funds, technology, utilities, and contract services, keeps the library running smoothly. And then other expenses include essential supplies, maintenance, and operational needs. Next. Just quickly, um, so at the end of 2024, there was a data dashboard that was available for libraries to look through, um, through the Department of Public Instruction and Wisconsin Public Library Consortium as a pilot project. So this dashboard displayed data from Wisconsin Public Libraries 2023 annual reports in the form of graphs and charts. With this dashboard came an option to compare a library stats to other similar, similar libraries or cohorts in terms of library locations, such as rural, town, suburban, and that population. Our three cohort libraries are Broadhead, New Holstein, and Tomahawk. So I just wanted to go over a couple that, that I found interesting that I looked at. As you can see in this first graph, 52% of Algoma's residents had a library card in 2023, um, significantly, significantly higher than our other three cohorts. And then next slide. Uh, score footage, as you can see here, Algoma has the smallest score footage in comparison to our other cohorts. Yes, next slide. And then circulation. Algoma has the smallest building size, but second highest circulation. I think this shows that we are using our space very efficiently. Next slide. And then collection, this is collection size, um, which makes sense, as we have the smallest collection size and we have the smallest building size. Next slide. This one, I'm, I'm pretty proud of. Our staff works really hard every year on programming and providing, providing things for our community members to do. I think this shows, um, number of programs and program attendance in, in comparison shows that our library is doing, doing quite a bit with what we, what we have. Next slide. So 2025 goals and future plans. We are excited to have been selected for the PBS Kids Library and Community Learning Cohort. Uh, it's a fantastic opportunity to collaborate with other libraries and, and enhance our communities' educational and development resources for children. A job pod expansion, we're working on ways to help more individuals with our job search. We're planning for a possible move, as we know, no, no decisions have been made yet. And then enhancing services. Um, we're always looking for ways to better serve our community. We continue to offer books, um, and more. Public computers, Wi-Fi, job pod, programs for all ages, hotspots, learning tablets, meeting room space, we have copying services. We're growing community partnerships, and we are increasing outreach every year. So as you're seeing through this presentation, our library, um, it's more than just books, while they are important and a big part of what we do, we're also a vital resource for learning, connection, and community growth, from expanding access to technology and workforce support to providing programs for all ages. We continue to evolve to meet the needs of our residents. Our partnerships, strong community support, and my dedicated staff make it all possible. Looking ahead, we remain committed to enhancing our services and ensuring the library remains a welcoming space for everyone. Thank you for your time and continued support. That's all I have. If anybody has any questions? Comments?
Congratulations. Keep going.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Good job.
Uh, and then we have the CDC grant request. Who's tackling that?
CDC, I mean, yeah. Okay, so this came up from CDC. It's a bird city. Uh, every year, there's a $175 annual renewal fee that they, they requested the city. Kathy had come in, uh, to present to the CDC, and you saw in the packet, there's a plethora of things, um, tree planting in Peterson Park, uh, birds and brews, the annual migratory bird day celebration, which will be April 27th this year from 92 at the high school. Um, it's, it's a, a small, small dollar amount for, uh, an exceedingly, you know, uh, abundantly, uh, contributed effort to, to the community. So we'd just be looking for the approval of the $175.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
I'll second.
I think John made the motion.
Oh.
I, uh.
Second.
Amy, you second it? Uh, just all in favor?
Aye.
Pools? Carries. All right. And then the ordinance, 849 Mobile Food Establishment, uh, the first reading of the ordinance. Go ahead, take off.
Okay, so everyone has the Mobile Food Establishment ordinance in their packets, and you also have a, um, potential application with some proposed fees on it. So let's. So let's focus on the ordinance before we go to the application. From the last meeting, there were some questions of what does the state require for a mobile food establishment before they get a license? They have to be licensed with the state. And in doing so, they have to have their food manager certification. Those are the two things that we found through the state that they have to do to get licensed. Another question was what has to happen to your fire inspection? That would be that they have to-- first of all, as part of your state process is you have to have the proper fire PPE equipment for that. But then, going off of what the city of Sturgeon Bay does, they have to have an exit access, means of egress. They have to have fire extinguishers. They have to show that their fire extinguishers have been maintained, that there's no obstruction, and that they're mounted properly. If they have a hood system, they have to be-- is it clean and is it inspected? That's all that is being inspected when they're doing this fire inspection. So back to the ordinance itself. There were some things that we kind of sat down, cleaned up, scrubbed a little bit. One of them is adding the paragraph-- I believe it starts on page 1, line 41-- "for mobile food establishment temporary permit." It means that a mobile food establishment, as described in the prior paragraph, but is operating for no more than three consecutive days in conjunction with an event or festival that is being hosted within the city. A temporary permit must be obtained before selling food. So that would be for somebody who wants to maybe come in for a special event, or they don't want to come to Algoma more than once a year. They just want to come one time, or maybe this three days within this one time for whatever that event might be. So we kind of cleaned some of that up. We took out some wording as it pertained to proposed seating areas. We wanted a business plan narrative addressing several things. I'm on page 3, line 126, for a proposed seating area. We don't see that we're going to have proposed seating areas, so we're not going to put that in the application. There was some more that was taken out about the seating area. There was another one in section 28-206, line 197. It used to read, except as provided herein, permitted mobile food establishments shall not operate upon or in public properties or ways. That whole thing was struck, because then they wouldn't be allowed to park on the side of the road wherever they're selling it. It would limit them to private property, commercial private property. So that was struck. We did some more striking-- parking calculations may be reviewed as part of the site plan by the planning commissioner, city council. That really pertained to the city of Sturgeon Bay. That didn't pertain to us. The city of Sturgeon Bay permits their mobile food establishments for one location. And if they decide to move from that location, they have to get a separate permit. That really doesn't apply to us here. Maybe it will down the road, but right now it doesn't. So that was also struck. I think that's kind of about it. Did anybody-- oh, signage. The previous one did not allow signage. You could only have it like on the mobile food establishment itself. There's so many that we see that have like those little chalkboard TP signs. What's the harm in putting one of those out in front? So we kind of use our best judgment and struck that too. So with what everybody has, the cleaned up ordinance in front of them, is there any questions or anything anybody wants to review?
Two questions.
Sure.
You made reference to Sturgeon Bay. So who does that inspection then?
Which one?
The fire inspection.
Their fire department.
And then on this line, 122, where it says the applicant should provide a mobile food business plan, talking hours of operation. Is there going to be hours that are going to be set by the city, or is it going to be just up to each individual?
So I'll address the first part. So the mobile food application business plan, we really tailored our application to be that business plan, so you're not writing, you know, a three-page narrative about your business plan. We tried to encapsulate most of what we felt was the most important to be in this application. And the second part of your question was-- what was your question?
If you go to line--
Hours.
Hours. It is in the ordinance, I believe, the hours--
Line 241 on page 5.
7:00 AM until 10:00 PM.
Okay. Question, so like for shanty days, do these people that bring in their stuff for the shanty days event, do they have to get a permit then for their mobile food establishment?
Yes.
Even though everything's going through the chamber room, and they're kind of handling it, they get preventers?
Yes. It's all across the board.
I guess my question is, we had the last meeting when we talked about this. We said we wanted to go back to PPP. Do you reconsider at the committee level, not at this level? And this has not been done. What is the rush on this now? Why are we seeing this again so soon?
I think this was the recommendation to bring it back here.
No, it was not. The recommendation--
Yes.
Quite a word. It was--
Was it really?
Because we-- there was a moment we had discussed potentially sending it down, but then the conversation was-- it was sent up--
All right, then I stand corrected.
Yeah.
I agree.
Please.
Reference to the fire department, and are you going to do inspections? The reason I'm asking is if it gets to the point that you can't handle it or vice versa, would it be wise to take that out of here then? So that there's no liability down the road? I mean, seeing that they get a state inspected as is, why would you open a can of worms and put in your proof of inspection by the city mobile fire department? I mean, if he doesn't figure they can handle it and do it, then it should be eliminated out of the ordinance.
I think that's a couple-part question, okay? I do agree that if we're going to have them come in Friday morning and get an inspection, that that's wrong. But if they have five days or six days, I think it's the states in here now--
Yes.
--to schedule an inspection, I think we can schedule an inspection within that six days prior to them getting a permit.
That's what I'm asking. Because apparently, at the last time, you said it's just not going to work.
Well, but the last time, I think they had like 20-- or that same day, they could get permitted. Now they have to have--
Oh, no.
Schedule that in five days.
Well, that doesn't sound like the-- I mean, based on what you're saying, the inspection consists of ensuring fire extinguisher, extinguisher, extinguisher. It's not like it's an in-depth-- I mean, or a broadly invasive thing. It's probably-- I mean, timewise, I wouldn't speculate, but I can't imagine it's going to take up a tremendous amount of time. And I understand it's more stuff. But I think that when we look at the scope of what we're currently working with and the number of things that we have, I can't imagine it being that onerous, especially if it's a, you know, a further benefit for the community.
Well, I just can't see calling people here early to go through an inspection so that they can be there for one day or two days at another event, say like a tight event. Sure, and so on, or so, or something like that. I just don't see that. And I think you're rightly-- it opens us to liability that we don't have before. Once we inspect it, and there's a fire and somebody gets hurt, it's our responsibility. We're going to be named in that suit, and I don't-- I don't agree.
No, no.
I think you say that exactly.
Yeah. I disagree on that part. What I'm trying to say is if they can't handle taking care of it and that, then it should be taken out of there, so it's not added. But I mean, when they do the inspection, there's a form they fill out, and both of them sign it. So if there's a violation or something, they know about the violation. And technically, if they want, they can stop them from serving until they get it fixed. But it's, you know, I was just-- with our discussion the last time, it was, he didn't know if they'd be able to go inside and handle it.
So then on shanty days, he'll have to come in and inspect all these trailers?
They would have to be inspected. They would have to be inspected five days before--
Five days before they-- so they're going to have to come to town.
Yep.
Special trip.
Yep.
I don't see.
But-- I have a question. So those vehicles that are here permanently, they would just get it once, and then they're good.
Purely.
And that's what this ordinance is for. This ordinance is not for shanty days or any of the other special events. It is for our year-round people or businesses who have decided to be food trucks.
But in here, it's that that would be shanty days, because it'd be a temporary event for three days. So that's shanty days then.
That is shanty days. But the meat and the bulk of this ordinance applies to somebody who is doing their mobile food truck establishment in the city of Algoma year-round.
Correct. Then why don't we take like city events off of this? What's used to have it?
And why are we--
Because shanty days is run through the chamber. We have nothing-- That's not the point. The point is if we're going to have a license, then have a license. If you're not, then don't have a license at all. We're going to start picking and choosing who's going to get a license. And then what's the use to have it?
Well, we're not picking and choosing. We're basically filling out an application.
They are, correct. But--
We pick shanty days, and we're picking and choosing.
Yes.
I agree with Aaron. And this is a year-- this is a food truck per year thing.
And that's just a one-off.
They show up on shanty days, good for them.
Just to clarify too, then, just because I had other people ask me, this does not include the nonprofits--
Correct.
--that are--
It really is only for your-- the first two in section 28-201, mobile food vendor, mobile food establishment. That's who this applies to. So if you're a little league and you're selling brats and hot dogs down at concerts in the park, you don't apply, because you're not a mobile food establishment.
The tents would also be exempt, correct?
The tents. Yeah, like the tents--
I'm picking on shanty days.
The tents at shanty days, the tents at the Wet Whistle Wine Fest, the car show. Those are not mobile food establishment.
I just wanted that stated, so that--
It doesn't say anything about the five days prior in the ordinance. And it doesn't say it on the application. We plan on putting together like a pre-packet kind of thing to hand out like with these or to have on our website, kind of like how we explain the short-term rentals. The mobile food establishment would kind of say the same thing. But it's kind of best practice is how we looked at it. Other municipalities give you, I think, up to 48 hours prior to the event. And if you're turning your paperwork in 48 hours, you're almost paying double the fee. And then if it's 72 hours, it's, you know, a little less than that. And it's-- I don't know that we want to be going around and messing around with that. We most certainly don't want to be doing inspections and issuing a permit the same day. We want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence with this as well. If we have an ordinance in place, let's make sure that we have everything and not rush our way through it.
And one more question. Mr. Mayor? Is there a limit on how many vendors we're going to license each year?
Not in ours, there is not.
Okay. Did any of the other cities have a number?
Efrum did, and they had five.
Okay. I was just wondering, you know, it could potentially open up that maybe we had 10 trucks for all these events, and then that would impact our local businesses, which I didn't want to have happen. So that's what made me think about it. Or even our nonprofits down at Concerts in the Park, if three food trucks show up-- the impact is there. So I just, food for thought, we might want to consider putting a limit on it.
I think that's something that down the road, we would revisit, Amy, if we had to. All of a sudden, we have 28 food trucks coming into town every weekend.
That's why I brought it up. I'm not saying we have to do it now.
I think at that point, we would revisit it. I don't think that we have to worry about that yet.
And I know we would make that exception for shanty days, because then we have more, but I just--
But if you're going to make an exception for that, then we'd need to write that in the ordinance. If we're putting a limit on it, we also have--
Yeah, right. I just want people that this is the first reading. Maybe, you know, we have time to still think about it.
Sure. Does anybody have any other questions on the ordinance itself?
I do. With regard to this fire inspection, help me better understand what our expectations are. And the only reason I'm asking that is because, you know, you referenced the city of Sturgeon Bay. Well, the city of Sturgeon Bay has a full-time department where they have personnel on staff all the time, where we don't. So I'm just asking if you're going to put this out that these need to be inspected, you know, we're going to need time to schedule somebody to be available to do this inspection. So I hope you're considering that as you're putting this together.
Yep, so I'll touch on that first, Matt.
Go ahead.
So until you turn in your mobile food establishment application, and that's right on the application, the applicant must be-- oh, sorry, my bad. Contact Algoma Fire Department, 487-2712, to schedule an inspection. They can't--
I'm sorry.
Okay. Right on the application itself, it says that you have to contact the Algoma Fire Department to schedule an inspection. You can't turn in this application until you have that inspection signed off on. So as far as the timing requirement, that is up to the mobile food establishment itself to set it up with the fire department and to coordinate a time and date that works for the Algoma Fire Department. And then I think the second half of your question was what gets inspected?
Yeah, I see that in the back.
Yep, and that came straight from the city of Sturgeon Bay, from their whatever programming they use. I think it's the software that you guys had before, the one that you have now. It's very-- do you have an extinguisher? Is it current? Do you have a hood? Is it inspected? Is it clear? That's all that they inspect.
Okay. And then, you know, with this application, does this have a timeline that it has to be submitted prior to the event that they're going to hold? And what my concern is is--
Five days.
Five days?
Yep.
So we have five days?
They have to have this completely filled out and completed before they turn it into the clerk's office. the clerk's office.
So they need to, they would need to contact us in advance, that five days?
That is correct.
Okay.
I mean, that's not to say that they can't do the inspection with you on Monday and turn the paperwork in immediately after the inspection is done.
Right, correct.
Any other questions on the ordinance?
I don't see the answer.
I, you know, Casey just put up a good thing. It might behoove us, because here again, we're not staffed 24/7 at the fire station in the number that's listed. Would it be okay if we listed City Hall as the number to contact for that inspection? They have a better chance of getting ahold of me rather than... So I, I would ask to have that number changed, contact and work this through City Hall when they're picking up the application.
And then collect the number and you would call them back?
And then, and then I would call them back to schedule some pictures.
Yep, that's an easy change.
Do you have a, do you have a city phone right now?
I do.
Can't you put that number in yet?
We can, but what if he's gone?
Well, it's a mobile, isn't it?
Like out of state?
It is.
Yeah. I mean, we can, either one.
I, I don't have a problem scheduling with City Hall. We send the chief a mail.
You'll have to talk to him.
Yeah, I'm sending him an email saying, this is on, not getting a phone call, but yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on the ordinance?
I didn't see the fees, and now we have two different fees.
Yep. Yep. Any other questions on the ordinance? Okay, so the application. So we came up with an annual fee of $100 to match our transient fee. Our transient permit right now is currently $100. It hasn't changed since I've been here. I also don't think that we've issued more than three since I've been here. Temporary three days, so that would be that special event, or somebody who decides, hey, I'm only coming to Algoma for one day. That would be $60 for that. We encourage you to get a year-long permit. We want you to come back, right? Algoma is continually growing. Our tourism is, you know, off the charts. I want you to come back with your food truck. So I'd like it if you pay that extra $40 and get a year-long permit and come back and see our beautiful city. So it was kind of at the 60 to deter you from getting a one day, a one day, a one day, but, you know, it's a business decision at the end of the day, how you're going to proceed with it. A license reissueancy, I'm not gonna touch on that right now, because that's further down in the application. But we basically just go through the application from top to bottom as what does the ordinance say that you have to have in your business plan? And that's what we correlated over to the mobile food establishment. Is everything that's in the ordinance on this application? No, because some of the things are, you know, do you have a plan for your wastewater? Yes. You know, I don't need to see that. I don't need to feel, have it here on the application. We didn't take every single thing and put it there, but just kind of the really highlight important things of what you need to operate. On the back is the inspection by the Algoma Fire Department. The next one is the proposed locations for the MFEs. Like we said with the city of Sturgeon Bay, they do it to one specific spot. And if you want to move from place A, that is your home base, and you wanna go to the YMCA, you have to pay 55 or 65 dollars to have a one-day permit for that new location. We decided, what if we go with locations? So why don't you tell us where you want to be in the city of Algoma? Do you wanna be up at Multicolor? Do you wanna be at Legion Park? Do you wanna be in front of Anapie, Von Steele, The Cider Bar? And if you decide to play, put those places, do you have permission from Anapie, Von Steele, The Cider Bar, Multicolor, to use their restrooms? If you don't have permission from them to use your restrooms, you're already in violation of the ordinance, and I can't issue you a permit for that location. So that temporary, or that $15 fee on the front, that license reissuance would be if you decided you wanted to add another place. Let's say you wanted to go in front of the Steel Pour, and you had permission from the Steel Pour to do that, but it wasn't on your application. You would need to come in and you'd like to request that I can go in front of the Steel Pour. I have written permission to do so. We would reissue you a license that simply has that added Steel Pour, or that added location to it.
And even if you have the $100 annual fee?
Yep.
So if somebody like, the one that runs around, what's his name?
Steel Belly.
Steel Belly. One day he's up by Silas, for example.
Yep, so on his original application, you would need to list, I think I'm gonna go to, I have written permission from Silers, from Von Steele, from XYZ.
So he has to list every one of the locations that he might be at?
Correct. Yep.
And then he has to have permission from them to use your bathrooms? So that's gonna be another piece of information.
Correct. Yep.
But then Wayne, if he wants to add a new one, then he just, he just has to pay another $15.
Yes.
If all of a sudden he gets a new pop-up and they go, hey, we're gonna go to Perrinfield, another $15.
What does Sturgeon Bay charge?
A lot. Like 550 dollars for a year permit, and every time you wanna add a new location, it's like 70, 60, 55 to 75 dollars, depending on where it is. And that's for one day. So you'd have to pay 75 dollars to move your trailer from place A to place B for one day. So that's where that $15 fee comes in. The service type, open-air, enclosed, enclosed whole service. Hours of operation, what are you planning? Are you gonna mimic the ordinance? Are you, do you only serve dinner from four till nine? What's your hours? Kind of going along with that business plan? And then, what do we need from you? We need your permits, your certificates showing that you've taken the classes, that you've been approved by the state, your valid driver's license, your liability insurance, photos of your mobile food establishment, and then permission from the property owners to be where you are.
So for example, that, that one that's in Kiwania, he steps up, or the one in Luxembourg, where they're there all the time?
Sure.
For $100, they could do that then?
If you would have written permission from, let's say they're gonna do it at the gas station. Yep. If you would have written permission from the gas station, yeah. And think about it from like your commercial aspect too. Right now, if we don't have any of these proposed locations, you can go set up wherever you want, as long as it's within a commercial district.
But you gotta have access to bathrooms, yeah?
You do have to have access to bathrooms, but, yeah. I think this will make the business owner kind of think about it too. Hey, I don't need 30 food trucks in front of mine. I'm only gonna allow A, B, and C, or whatever they decide.
And this is just the first reading?
This is just the first reading.
First reading.
Yeah, so is there any changes anybody wants? I mean, I have the phone number updated for the application. Is there any changes anybody wants for the ordinance itself?
What about the fee schedule? Because I know for the fire department, when we do, I'm gonna call it special inspections, when we do like issuing a permit annually for fireworks or dispensing of fuel, say like the Reno, we do a site visit and issue them a permit separately. Does that get added in as well for these inspections? Or we're just gonna keep that?
Part of the $100, isn't it?
It's part of, it's built in at a $100 fee. It goes back into the revenue, called for the fire department though.
Not the $100.
Not the $100, but when we get our...
What do you get when you do an inspection of the city businesses?
Pardon me?
Do you get anything when you do the city businesses, like do you...
No, but this isn't a city business.
Well, I know, but I mean, now you're drawing the fine line in the sand here. So you're gonna do something and now you wanna be reimbursed for it, correct? That's what you're saying?
Correct.
What is your special, what's your price?
25 bucks.
So we could go 125?
Per inspection.
But you're taking somewhere that you gotta pay to do the job.
Well, who's gonna do this? That person you hired? For inspection, you have a person hired, correct?
I haven't decided on that yet.
But you do have a person hired for inspections?
We have a person that's doing inspections, yes.
So does no one on the fire department do inspections anymore?
Yes. Casey does some as well. We have other inspectors that are qualified to go out and do them.
So Casey is a qualified inspector, correct?
Yes.
So as his, as, if you change his job description, we'll just include it in there? As Public Works Director certified, he can do it?
As long as he's...
I mean, if we're gonna get, if we're gonna start drawing lines in the sand, I mean, then you gotta increase the fee by 25 dollars or whatever.
I'm just saying, when we issue special permits for other things, we have as part of the fee schedule, it's a 25 dollar per inspection and permit issuance.
That's up to you guys to set the fee schedule.
Build it into the $100.
I mean, does that cover your time? I mean, that's really the, the thing. I mean, if that's the case, I, I mean, yes, yes or no. I mean, if, if, if you're fine with the number and we can build in the 25, that's fine. It doesn't really matter. We don't have to belabor it. If you need the 25, understandable, that's fine. I'm not, I'm not, it's fine. Do we do 125? Do we do 100? It doesn't really matter. We can start at 100, allocate 25 for the, the inspection, then if we find that this process is more involved than we had thought, then we revisit it.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's just the starting point. Maybe even by the time we have the second reading, we're like, you know what? Perhaps, you know, we've reconsidered what we should do with it. So I think that at this point, unless somebody has a solid, like, yes, we should do 150, or we should do 125, whatever it is, let's leave it at 100, let's accommodate the 25 or whatever. If, if that's, if that's a sticking point, I don't have a, a problem with it.
And I can let it hold up, but I just think that all of a sudden now, because you're gonna do an inspection, which we, might be how many, you're gonna start paying an extra 25 when we're not, the businesses aren't paying it. And it's a benefit to the businesses in Algoma. This is just like a benefit, but if you wanna pay the department 25, so be it. I don't care.
How was this the benefit?
Well, I think the Algoma businesses pay taxes here, that these guys do not...
But the guy did, maybe the guy who wanted to pay taxes too.
Well, are we all in agreement to just leave it at $100?
So between the first reading and the second reading, are there any changes that you want to see to the ordinance or the application itself, besides the phone number?
Do we have to put any, we allocate 25 bucks to fire department?
No.
No.
I'll make it as a comment as part of, part of the minutes, but, but that's not gonna be on the application or in the ordinance. Because every time we would go through the fee schedule, we'd have to make changes to the ordinance and, yeah.
I think you did a good job putting it together.
Thank you. Thank you to Jamie as well. Jamie was very instrumental in helping with this.
Jamie here, you guys did a good job.
Yep. We have a month to think about it.
Move forward and make a motion.
No.
Except first read.
Second.
Motion by Scott and second by Mitch.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Kevin Schmidt.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mervorden.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Boar.
Yes.
Ortley.
No.
Motion carries seven to one.
Thank you. Administrator's report, Matt.
Excuse me. Just a couple of things, and I don't even have one attached, because a lot of it is covered under the old business with the fire and rescue building and the administrative police and library. But just because of the nicer weather, I reminded everybody listening online and everybody here, that the parking ordinance is still in effect by the order of the police chief, with bad weather coming into play. If he changes that and puts something on their Facebook page that they will be out issuing, cannot be parked on the street, there, the no parking ban with the bad weather will go into place. So that is all that I had, just as a reminder. And then right around the corner, I know we just finished, but we have an election coming up that'll be here before you know it. And Aaron has just a thing to touch on that.
Sure thing. So the next election in the city of Algoma is Tuesday, April 1st. Polls are open from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM. Absentee voting will take place the second Tuesday before the election, and that'll run for the duration of the week and the following week, following normal business hours. Absentee ballots will be mailed out, hopefully very early next week. We're just waiting to get the ballots back from the printer. So anybody who has a valid request on file will get one mailed to them, and you're able to return those on election day, or all the way up to election day until 8:00 PM. Does anybody have any questions? Well, yeah?
I have a question, but not about that.
Sure.
Okay, Matt. Do we have an update on the building, the apartments going up across the street from Daines?
Oh, sure. So yes, they are right on track with the buildings. I think everybody can kind of see day-to-day progress.
Yeah.
And where that is going. I'm talking with Commonwealth, it sounds like right now, tentatively, they are gonna start looking to take applications like mid-April. So just over a month away, that they will let us know when they open that avenue for people to start applying, which they wanna try to be June, start having people in there. That's what they're looking at right now.
June of this year? Oh, wow, that's, they've kinda upped that.
Yeah.
Again, a lot of the information from that's always gonna come from the Commonwealth, and it's gonna come from courtside lots. I mean, we'll have very...
Not from us.
Yeah, that's true.
Limited information here. We won't have applications. We won't have, I mean, I think we're gonna have a phone number, right?
That is what we're gonna have. It's a phone number of who to get in touch with.
Yep. And we don't have that yet. I think there's one on the side of the building, but...
That is not the number to call to look for an apartment.
Did they give you a website?
They will have a website as soon as they get up and running. And as soon as we have those, we will get those out on our Facebook page, our social media, to try to get that out to everybody that we can.
Matt, do you have any further on that gentleman that's up in Industrial Park with the rest of that building, or whatever he's putting up? When a question came up about what was there, or mentioned there was...
I do not have a new plan from him yet, or an updated plan from him of what that's gonna look like.
I'll add one for you, Matt. Under great duress, Matt agreed to go to Madison for a shipwreck. Do you wanna let him know our newest shipwreck here in Algoma?
Yes, so we, we've had our second ship that has been found just outside of Algoma here, just to the east of the city of Algoma in Lake Michigan. Last week, I was in Madison for, it was adopted into the State of Wisconsin Historic Society. So that board met Friday morning, and Friday afternoon, that second ship was, was put into Wisconsin Historic Society, that it will be earmarked out forever, that you can, you can dive it, but you cannot remove anything off of it. It is, will always be now part of the Wisconsin Historic.
So what's the name of the ship?
We were gonna ask, I don't remember either. I just can't think of it right now. 19, like, 29 or something, 20?
I've got a question, Mr. Mike. So do we get a plaque or anything that shows the dive site, so people know where to go, or is that, we don't ever wanna do that?
They go to the chamber?
It wouldn't be us, and I don't know if they're gonna go.
We get a piece of paper from them saying that it's been registered.
Oh, okay. So, but there's no plaque going up or anywhere, so the divers know where to go?
Piece of paper from them.
They have a, what do you call it, where they locate the, the site by longitude and latitude, that's all.
Okay.
So they know where to put their ship, and then they go dive from there.
Okay. Thank you, Matt.
GPS, GPS.
Okay, thank you, Matt. I just have one thing. I had a lot of people questioning the red kegs for the assessor, and I asked Alan to come in. Matt and I had a meeting with him, just to find out what it is. And he is putting red kegs on doors. He is going to try to do 20% of the city every year for five years, so that we're up to date, so that he is actually in houses, just like people want him to be. My understanding is if he comes in your house, you think it's too high, your cabinets are, whatever, is old and outdated, and he would drop your assessment, he would drop it for the next year. If he goes in your house and decides your house is more valuable, he will wait for the five years, so that it's even for everybody. You don't get to be the first inspected and the first to pay higher taxes. So there is gonna, there are gonna be red kegs. It's not a, his goal to raise the taxes. It's his goal to be current in our assessment. Anything you wanna add, Matt?
No.
Okay, and that's all I had. Agenda items for the next meeting, get to Jamie here, or Matt. Next meeting date would be April 7, 5 o'clock. I'll be looking to go in, for a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 1985, section 1, subsection C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, compensation for performance evaluation data of any public or federal